Over a period of time and becoming an outbreak in Wuhan to an epidemic in China and spreading all over to Europe, USA, India and now even some of the African countries, Australia and New Zealand. So it has become a pandemic and all of you are bombarded with all the informations. And so, I chose to talk about coronavirus infection as an infection in, in three different ways. One is what is known about it. Another point is what is being studied. And the third would be what is unknown and still remains a challenge. So in these three different heads, I intend to have an interaction with all of you and I would be very happy to receive your additional inputs as well as the queries that you may have. Starting with what is known, all of us know by now that it's a viral infection and the epidemiology of viral infection is so well known to us. And we have experienced SARS and MERS earlier. Now going back to the experience of SARS and MERS, some of the developed countries prepared themselves properly and are doing fine. And the lessons learned from SARS and MERS are contrasted with what is happening to current coronavirus pandemic. The basic difference is the earlier diseases were more fatal, already high mortality, but they were low in infectivity. So they came, they remained for a short time, killed a lot of people and it got over for a period of time. While the coronavirus infection, unlike earlier coronavirus also, is different. And so we have started calling it novel coronavirus infection. It is ideally NCOVI, novel coronavirus. And when it becomes a disease, it is NCOVID. Right? Now the difference is that the current infection is highly infectious and contagious. And the mortality is very low if you take the full denominator of population. However, the mortality has been due to very severe illness among old people, people above the age of sixty-five years and people with comorbidities. In fact, there are references which tell us that almost over ninety percent deaths in earlier months in the epidemics in Europe and partly even in USA, the mortality has been among aged populations
TRG.
with comorbidities, particularly the comorbidities related to heart diseases,
TRG.
like hypertension and cardiac illnesses. So this is what is known at this point. And then comes the Indian scenario. We started getting the infection and started acting against it based on the experience of Wuhan, China and European countries. We quickly realized that trying to contain it into small pockets of outbreaks will give us time to prepare for a very high contagion leading to very high rates of infection and disease. The beauty is that most of the disease is mild and now we also know that there are people who suffer from it without knowing about it, asymptomatic. Now, all this was partly known to us when we started facing the infection in our country. And it was apparently to begin with was linked with the foreigners coming to this land with infection and then spreading it in small pockets of their individual contacts. So the containment efforts were linked with identifying and isolating them and going for a strict quarantine of contacts which we could trace fairly effectively across the country in the very initial phase of the infection, in Kerala, Tamil Nadu, in Rajasthan and even in Maharashtra and Gujarat to begin with, right? So this is how we are with coronavirus infection in our country. And subsequently, we bought time to prepare ourselves for what will be the, the health-related or health service-related challenges in the time to come. We got the time to prepare ourselves for preparing COVID care institutions, facilities for quarantine and isolation. And now we are at a stage when we have adequate capacity of COVID hospitals and even ventilatory care support, right? Because still, if we look at the mortality, data available shows that very few are going to need ventilatory care and most of the deaths in, in our country also are linked to comorbidities, right? So with this in the background, now let us try to understand what all we are doing. And to begin with, as I told you, we tried to contain, isolate and quarantine. In the meanwhile, we developed the capacity for testing the patients for affirmative evidence of corona infection. RT-PCR, which is so costly and so popular and so much in demand, we must realize as people in public health and healthcare settings that the positivity of, of the test is also useful in about seventy, seventy-five percent. That means the test is not hundred percent and that needs to be told to people in general, that is one. Second point is that like in HIV infections, which we have faced earlier and managed very well comparatively, we have learned to accept that proper preventive steps, general preventive steps should guide us to take care of the viral infection even in case of corona. Because if, if we logically look at it, for the purpose of prevention of transmission, we generally do not need confirmed diagnosis in each and every case. So the general measures for prevention, the universal precautions as we have known are applicable as much to coronavirus transmission prevention. Do we, do we need to tell people that they should not cough and spit all around, all over the world? In fact, I, I'm, I'm not being sarcastic. In the flu epidemic, it was realized way back hundred years back that when people learnt in flu that the spitting around is not an elite activity, they could then further control almost all infectious diseases which are contagious and respiratory transmission. So even for tuberculosis or any other viral infection, this basic protective activity makes sense and should be in place all the time, right? So next would be testing for healthcare workers and prevention of transmission among people who are taking care of hospitalized corona patients. And there, the testing has some role. And definitely, test positive patients will have to be handled for quite some time when they are indoor patients using appropriate personal protective equipment. So from testing, when we go to PPE, we need to tell everybody that it is the appropriate PPE which is important. Because the fear of corona and lack of understanding about the PP has put pressure on the systems to get the PPE for everybody, ranging from janitor to the cardiologist, all the same, which is not right. So we need PPE which is appropriate to the area and the activities in which they are involved. Now, in while doing so, as a general preventive measure, and I must mention here that the country under able leadership opted for a lot total lockdown. Although it is going to be debated for another hundred years, we in public health now know for sure that that one single measure has helped us give us a window of time to prepare ourselves for the possible uh, uh, continuity of the heavy transmission of the corona infection. So this lockdown gave us time to learn how to manage corona and corona-related behavioral changes which are required among the populations. Then came the antibody testing. All of us know friends that by measuring antibody, we are trying to work on the host. If we look at it from agent, host and environment point of view, when we look at the antibodies, we are looking at the host and how the host has managed the infection. And evidence of antibodies, particularly when we clearly know that it is IgM or IgG at an appropriate time interval from the date of infection, then we can be reasonably sure of the person having been exposed to the corona infection. And, and we believe that some of these with high IgG positivity and quantitative measures are not available friends. But with IgG positivity, some of these people would be useful in taking care of the corona-infected patients and that is a theoretical possibility. And that opened up the challenges of how to treat and manage corona infection. Because we do not have any specific treatment, because we do not have any specific protection like vaccine. And so, we end up learning from experiences of countries and populations who experienced it slightly before us, about six to eight weeks before us. And based on that, we, we started with a cocktail of antiviral medicines which were tried in Rajasthan indoor patients in the early days of Corona India. And later on, some of the specific antiviral medicines are also being tried. But today, you must have read the reference that reminavir, which is claimed to be the specific treatment in a scientific study, has been found to be of no specific use as a treatment of corona infection. So that is where we are as of today. So we can try antiviral medicines, combination of antiviral medicines. And in the process, hydroxychloroquine came into the picture. Now, this should not much surprise us because hydroxychloroquine, even in the textbooks which I read in late eighties, mentioned that it can be used as immunomodulator and it will help reduce the affinity of the virus, coronavirus to these respiratory cells. And we are trying to use that knowledge and execute though it's no clear-cut proof in the scientific environment. It is being used and you must have seen that over a period of time, we got more than one ICMR advisory and guidelines regarding the use of HCQ, how best it can be used and it, it is being used empirically with a hope that it will protect and it will help us avoid severe infection and involvement of the respiratory systems, which generally is the terminal event in patients who died. So that is where we are with reference to HCQ. A cocktail of HCQ and antiviral medicines is also being tried. And later on, early recently, we realized on the experiences of others who have faced more mortality and disease in more severe forms a little earlier that the plasma therapy can also be of some use in preventing and treating complicated cases of coronavirus infection. The, the, the problem is that as a scientist, if you look at it, the evidence is very much primary and not very strong, I should say a weak evidence. But when we don't have any treatment in particular, it is being tried. And the, the trials here and elsewhere will guide us as to our best to go ahead with it. So that is what is happening to plasma therapy and it is relevant to COVID hospitals and the care that we may have to offer to patients with severe complicated coronavirus infection. But when we are doing this for the purpose of community at large, we must have very clear understanding that even today, the disease is mild, highly contagious, sixty, seventy-five, eighty-five percent population is likely to be infected and not suffer from any severe damage. And less than, I am told, less than three to ten percent are going to need hospitalization and few specific supportive cares, which includes use of oxygen, use of ventilators and, and isolated hospital care. So keeping that in mind and the fact that we are, we are a highly populous, overcrowded geography, we must continue to focus on containment with the help of isolation and quarantine. Not only that, now the time has come when we are likely to see the end of lockdown. Now our focus should be broad-based and we should now start educating and making aware the population in general, all classes and all categories of patients, urban, rural, upper income, middle income. Because virus, virus is one thing which does not discriminate between anything. All humans are same for a virus. And so, everybody needs to be told about home quarantine and the systems need to support the home quarantine activities and prepare the population to face that as an applica-, as an infection which is going to be there, we have to learn to live with it. As my title suggests, I want everybody to learn to live with it. Because eighty-five, ninety percent of them are going to suffer from it as an infection and a mild disease or an inherent disease. Under these circumstances, when we know the high-risk and very high-risk categories of populations to be protected and I am sure the, the audience here does not need to be told who all are high-risk, all of you know. So sixty-plus population with comorbid conditions like hypertension and cardiac ailments, diabetes, cancer and cancer treatment, kidney diseases and few other things, all of you know. These are the people who need to be specifically told and their family members need to be communicated that they should remain in touch with their own general practitioner or a family physician or a consultant. And they also should be told about the specifics, signs and symptoms of corona infection with which if at all they suffer from, they should be reporting it to the health authorities, maybe from the public sector, maybe from the private sector. It has to be a very mammoth joint exercise. If we believe that our paramedical staff members in, in the urban area or the doctors working for corporation health services are adequate in number to take care of these populations, we are mistaken. It's humanly impossible. They need to be supported by all available medical and paramedical resources in identifying and taking care of these vulnerable categories of population for a period of next maybe three months. And then we will certainly be able to get away with it with minimum of mortality. And that should be our aim at this point. And containment activities are now expanding to that level where we have accepted that coronavirus is here, the infection is here. And we also know that nothing specific, much can be done about it and a lot can be done for the general prevention and taking care of the health of the populations. Now, the third point which I wanted to talk about is what is unknown. Because this infection, I have decided, as I told you, divided into three categories to talk about what is known, what is being studied and now coming to what is unknown. Now, there are a lot of things which are unknown. One most important is the possible mutations and different type of strains. Lot of research is going on and lot of people claim that already there are at least six different mutations which have already taken place. And the pattern of infection, its spread and the possible complications has not been consistent everywhere, which points to probably the agent being slightly different from each other. And you know that mutations in viral infection is known and is a very big hurdle in preparing the vaccines. So I have taken vaccines also under the category of what is not known. Lot of vaccine trials are going on. People are tapping over the cause of each other as countries and running the race in coming up with the vaccine useful against coronavirus infection. And there are six at least vaccine candidates which the current limited information on the research suggests that would be ready for human trial and availability in about one year time, which is a very big time. So waiting for the vaccine, doing nothing with folded hands is not going to help anybody. But if we do get vaccine, that will be a very specific protection and, and at the time of availability, we will have to then think of whom to vaccinate and the how and why of it. But at this point, vaccination still is not on the horizon, not even on the horizon, yeah. Then another issue is what is not known is specific treatment. And that has given us an opportunity to try several different things. We tried antiviral cocktails, we tried specific antivirals, we tried hydroxychloroquine. And for our country, very officially through the Irish Ministry, we have been trying homeopathy and Ayurvedic medicines which are presumed to be harmless and which improve the host resistance and perhaps will change the course of infection in the community. So that also is being tried, so empirically as we understand the modern science. Then we do not much know about repeat infections. Early reports are coming where the persons are getting infected again and not much explanations about it and not, not much of their disease course is studied in detail. So that remains the work to be done, a pending issue. And then coming to other pending issues, one such is the vertical transmission. We have included pregnant women as vulnerable group, the high-risk category. But we really do not know how they become high-risk. By, by becoming pregnant, which is an immunocompromising experience physiological, they become more vulnerable. And based on that, without any evidence, we have accepted that they are high-risk. But we have no evidence of either vertical transmission or the transmission from mother to the baby. And very emphatically, till recently, till today, breastfeeding is recommended. And so, the transmission of infection from mother to baby specifically is not under consideration beyond what it would be in any close context. That means wearing a mask, hand hygiene, sanitization and taking care of the close contacts, both through for or all close contacts and general prevention of this contagious disease. Then the other challenging issue is the other organ involvements. Lot of people are talking about the involvement of cardiac system and respiratory system. The recent studies, very early, are coming up, dealing with the damage to. Other organ systems like kidney and brain. And not much of it is studied in detail. Either here or elsewhere. And a lot of information on that will eventually come. Based on the very painful experiences of some European countries and USA. And we, we remain hopeful that that information will also help us in time to come. So, other in organ involvement is a pending issue. Then uh psychosocial implication. Uh I, I attach importance to it because uh particularly in our country. Uh which have a metallic attitude to the illness. The psychosocial implications are likely to be very important. And we already started working on it. I am glad that directorate had a couple of webinars on. Mental health during lockdown and mental health during COVID infection and thereafter. And the fear of it and if unfortunate event has happened. Among the close family members or in the neighborhood, it may also have its implications in terms of. Not only fear but the feeling of guilt also may take precedence. And lead to further complications. Uh it may affect the ability to interact with the family members and the society in general. Remain productive, COVID environment may be affected because of that. And it will have a very long term effect and it can be an important cause of depression. And post traumatic depression is very well known as a disease entity. We have faced it after earthquake, we have faced it after tsunami and this is. As bad as tsunami, so it may not be very apparent and though it may not be there for a very short time. So, psychosocial support systems will have to be in place for a long time. And you can learn that also from the people who faced it earlier. Uh I, I, I get to read some references where in Italy and Spain. They already have started such services for the people who lost their relatives. Then the healthcare workers and other emergency care workers who worked for this disastrous infection. And similarly here also, we will have to work with it particularly for the populations. Which, which are identified if I did have risk. The psychosocial implications will have to be considered. Now, economics has interested me as a teacher in public health. And economic fallout will have to be considered for years to come. And the lookout, the packages which had to be given for nearly one third of the population. Taking care of the migrants, taking care of the people who are daily wages. And we are talking of three hundred million people. It's not just one or two. Like, like in Australia for the entire country, it is eight legs. For India, it is three hundred million, one fourth of the population. So, considering this mammoth size and limited resources. We will have to have a very delicate balance and a trade off between restricting the activities. Lockdowns and the economic fallout will have to be managed for a period of further maybe two years. And this economic fallout has to be seen, not only from the point of view of industrial activities. It will have to be seen in light with what has happened to the world around. And how that has affected us, ranging from an individual and a family. To the national policy guidelines with reference to industry will have to totally change. I mean, the pre-COVID world will have to be almost forgotten. And all the new equations will come with reference to post-COVID existence of individuals. Family, community and the nation. So, I, I believe, I have done my job. Now, I am open to questioning or observations and comments from participants.
Thank you very much, Baksar. For a wonderful informative session, sir has touched so many untouched areas also. And the things which may not have been thought of that also sir has informed us. And shared his experience also. Thank you very much sir on behalf of S I H F W. Uh for this wonderful session, this session is open for question answer. Participant can write their questions in Q and A section. Q and A is you will find it on your screen. Uh that you will find the three dots icon. Any under, try to tap cover the icon, tell me, Jova, my, Tamari screen per. Any under Q and A no option Jova, Marsha, you can write your question in Q and A section. If participants find it difficult to write their question in Q and A, then you can write in chat box also. We will take that questions also. Uh there is a comment from Dr. Chandraseeth Pandya sir. Uh for giving excellent insight on the topic, your experience will make difference.
Thank you, Chandraseeth, for the kind words.
Let us have the. I'll make everyone can see question answer. We have almost two hundred and fifty participants joined this session. We will take your questions one by one. First question is from Dr. Akshay Upadhyay sir.
Yes.
Uh how long should the universal lockdown in our country be there?
Okay, okay. Although I am not a policymaker, we do make recommendations. And it's a delicate trade off between economics and health of the community. Once we feel that we are ready with COVID hospitals and COVID care centers. That is the time when lockdown can be eased out. That is one. The second would be the economic aspect of it. When we know that three hundred million are affected and need to be taken care of by the systems. We will have to consider the migrants also and consider easing out the lockdown. I cannot put a date to it, but you may feel that in some of the states. Partial easing out and partial continuity of lockdown may be in place on third May.
There is a question, I think it's a feedback from Dr.
Universal precautions. Okay, universal precautions are universal. We, we, we should continue to practice it in the healthcare settings. And continue to educate community in practicing it. So it, it doesn't mean wearing a mask all the time, but it's a good idea to make social distancing. We have uh properly avoid large gatherings, avoid. Uh any activities where a lot of people will come in closer context. This may have to continue for two years, even two years, yes.
Uh next. A feedback from Dr. Rajesh Gopal. Thanks, Sir Tan Baksisah for a wonderful presentation. Any estimate or guess, uh a guess estimate about when will be. Uh have eventual resolution of COVID nineteen in Gujarat and Dr. Rajesh Gopal, we have unmuted you.
Uh the, the resolution, what exactly sir do you mean by resolution? The infections are going to be there and if we, if we test more, we will be able to say that tested positive or more. If we use antibody test, we will be able to say that we have many who are confirmed cured. Like in HIV seral for which you have managed the state so well. We will have to trade between, trade off between going for specifics and investigations. And keeping universal vigil in place. So, considering the epidemic of COVID. Uh ill and I have the backup of some of the national epidemiologists. Who say that between sixty-five to eighty-five percent population will have to face the infection. For a period of time, which may mean one year or more.
Okay, uh Dr. Rajesh Gopal sir, we have unmuted you. You can interact if you want with Baksisah.
Welcome, Dr. Gopal.
Okay, we will take next question. Avni Choudhary is asking, sorry, Chandan Bhaman is asking. We are using Ayurveda treatment from last five thousand years, there is on need any kind of clinical trial. How we should use Ayurveda medicine at COVID hospital?
Okay, very pertinent question and I am no authority on that. But fact remains that the epidemic involves agent, host and environment. So even if we don't have Ayurvedic medicines specific for the agent. For the support of the host, lot of things are available because ultimately it's a science of health, Ayurveda.
Avni Choudhary is asking, this session was too much information. Please, if possible, send PDF to us so that we can train others. Uh Avni Ben.
I am lipid dependent. I am lipid dependent.
Uh sir, we will, ma'am, we will share the YouTube video with you. Uh you will be able to find our sessions, YouTube video on S H F W Vodhra channel on YouTube. Uh Shilpa Sakshina is asking, it was mentioned six strains are there at present. Is it in India only or throughout the world?
Uh I mentioned six different mutations all over the globe, not only in India.
Pankaj Patel is asking, tell us more about herd immunity regarding this disease.
Okay, a very interesting thing. Conceptually, sir, herd immunity would mean. That the pressure of people who are protected, when that exceeds the number. Which viral infection cannot manage, the herd infa- herd immunity will come in play. And the rest of the people would be protected. Now, the references tell us that it may mean some exposure to infection. Among almost eighty percent of the population. Now, the, the further clarification would be. That because the infection is giving very adverse outcome. In people age above sixty and comorbidities. Higher infection among younger population and proportionately because we have. More younger population, we are likely to get the advantage of this herd immunity. Earlier because proportionately we will have milder infection in a larger number of. Age group of people. That's how I look at it.
There are other more participants thanking you sir for a wonderful session. Participants can write their question in Q and A box, in Q and A section. If you have more questions, you can ask. You can also write in chat box. Okay, so there is one more question. Uh Missarg is asking, what are the difference between tactics of Germany and Australia? In comparison to other countries, why they have lower mortality?
Okay, this, this, this makes it little more personal for me. My daughter is in Australia in partial lockdown, so I will start with Australia. It's a population which is less than the population of Gujarat and spread out on a continent. Which is I think fifteen times the size of India. So, that is one big geographic advantage. Another is that the entire continent is an island. After cutting the international travel. They quarantined everybody, those who traveled in and took care of them. For fourteen days minimum, very strictly. And today only, I was listening to Prime Minister Morrison telling the world. That the testing in Australia is six hundred times more. Than many other developed countries. So, testing and taking care of isolation and quarantine brought it down very rapidly. Mortalities have been there, but it is much less because overall the spread of the disease also. Has been much less.
Doctor P G Chauhan is asking, namaste sir, any other more better non-medication way compared to lockdown?
Uh in a small organized community, we could have tried. But for a country of our size and concentration of population. Lockdown had to be in place because we did not have resources to test everyone, isolate. Manage the isolation and quarantine for millions of them. That could not have been done. So we had to act for a large number of population for the purpose of prevention.
Shilpa Sakshina is asking again, it's being claimed that Sweden will achieve herd immunity in one week or so. Your comment on that, sir?
Uh exactly, no idea, but. Uh exactly, uh no idea but Sweden population would be less than the footfall in one of the malls in Ahmedabad.
Okay. Uh Dr. M C Trivedi, is there any data about HIV patient getting infection?
Uh uh I'm sorry, I'm not aware of it, sir.
Participants are requested to mute their audio. Himal Himal Suthar is asking, coronavirus mathi cure thai gaya?
Yeah, I got the question, I did mention that that is in my third part of the presentation. We are dealing with it, we are started dealing with it, so we will learn all a bit of time. But it happens.
Uh Himal Suthar is asking, coronavirus mathi cure thai gaya baad farithi spread thavani shakya ta chhe?
I I said, I think I answered him as well, the infection is a possibility.
So if participants are having any more questions, we can take. Or we may end this session. Participants are requested to mute their audio, please. If you have any question, you can write in Q and A box. So uh sir, I think there are no more questions.
I remain thankful and let us learn and grow together and fight it out as successfully as possible.
S I H F W is thankful to Dr. Baxi sir for continuous support whenever required for teaching, training, webinars and all. Thank you, sir, uh and we are.
Very much, Dr. Luki.
We are thankful to our participants also who have interacted, taken active participation in this webinar.
And convey my thanks to Madan sir.
Sure, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.